Been on this whole time.
All right, we're live. Call to order, the Monday, December 20th meeting of the school committee. I think we start with a pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, through the republic in which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have any recognitions tonight?
We have no recognitions this evening.
Can I, I would like to recognize one thing with the, that internet-based incident last Friday. I'd like to thank the police for their increased presence here on Friday and trying to reassure everyone and make them feel a little better about that whole situation. That was a bit of internet absurdity and I'm glad we got through that.
It was quite a day, that's for sure.
Yeah. All right, Student Advisory Council, Joe, flashy suit, what you got for us?
So for the past month, student council has been working on a lot of holiday-themed events. We've had the Giving Tree. The Giving Tree is a part of our Holiday Committee Service Project where we gather toys and gifts for those, for those in need for the upcoming holiday season. Students, staff, and community members can donate. And it was slightly used toys that ended this Monday and we received 92 toys per donation. We had Holiday Room Decorating. Holiday Room Decorating is an event where students pair up with another grade and decorate a teacher's room. It's a great way to get students excited for the holiday season. Holiday Room Decorating was December 6th to the 20th. We had our big event of the year, Christmas in NV. Christmas in NV is a yearly event that takes place around the holiday season. This year's Christmas in NV took place on December 18th from 12:00 to 2:00. We had lots of people attend and to participate in fun activities and take pictures with Santa. And finally, we have our Holiday Spirit Week, which is happening right now. Holiday Spirit Week is from December 17th to the 23rd. This week, this week is filled with holiday-themed days like Red and Green Day, which was today.
Can you stand up so they can see your suit on the... Absolutely fantastic. Thank you, Joe. Sounds like you guys have had a busy month.
Oh, yeah.
Next, approval of minutes. We've got two sets of minutes to approve tonight. If you guys are okay with it, I'm just gonna name both of them. Unless they have any discussion, we can vote on them at once to approve both. You good with that? The first one is the School Committee Regular Meeting of November 15th, 2021. And second is the School Committee Executive Meeting of November 15th, 2021. So do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from November 15th, 2021, regular meeting and executive session.
Second.
Any discussion on those minutes? All right, all in favor of approving? All three of us approved? Correspondents?
I just wanted to say we participated in a grant with Bay Path for a homeless grant and we were awarded $2,500. So there is an award letter. We have not received ours yet. I did contact them and apparently they just sent it to Bay Path. So I just asked them for a copy of what theirs had. But we should be getting one in the mail and I will put that in the file when we get it. But I haven't received it yet. And then there is some information from the Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative. As a school district, we belong to the collaborative and we utilize them for some of our students with special needs for outside services that we cannot provide here. We belong to this collaborative for, geez, many, many years. So they, as part of their transparency and part of their bylaws, they need to contact us and send us the information for their quarterly reports and their annual reports. So I've included both of those into the information to take a look at. See if you have any questions about that. Anna is very familiar with them. We do them, we use them for some of our outside services for our students with disabilities. And they're very good providing professional development for us when we need it. And is that about it, Anna? PD and...
I think we got, that's about it. They also have some other programs like this, you know, we need to refer out for a student for an assessment. You know, they also have some summer programming for some high-needs students, things like that.
So as part of their, as part of our agreement with them, they have to provide us two times a year their quarter report and then annual report is once a year. Those are what I have for correspondences.
Anyone else have any other correspondence? All right. Move on to public participation. Is there any public participation tonight?
Retreating professional rights responsibilities chair, the NVTA. Just reminding you that over a month ago, we sent you a letter asking to reopen negotiations for the contract which ends this current school year. We haven't heard any communication back, so we're hoping that it's going to be forthcoming relative to...
Okay, thank you. Presentations.
There's no presentations at this time.
All right. School committee reports. Any school committee reports? All right. Financial reports?
Okay, so I've attached some of the financials from the last month. Michelle has been working pretty diligently to make sure that we are staying on track. So if you can see, there's some general ledger reports. We have some deposits. And then our general payroll warrants are in here for you to take a look at. Right now, we look like we're on track to use our expenses. We are now currently looking at the grants and putting in funding for some of the positions that we applied for for grants. So at this time, we are now transferring some money out of the general fund. Not actually transferring, but we'll be starting to take money out of the grant funding for some of these positions that we have. Would that be about right? Yeah, so in the past, we haven't, we've just been using the general fund for salaries. But now, moving forward, the rest of the money will be allocated for salaries for what we've used. And some of the other things, professional development and other things such as, you know, supplies from ESAR. So we'll be looking at those to give you more information on that. And moving forward, we may be sending probably some budget transfers in the next couple of months from, to make sure that we're balancing on all sides. So that's what I have on my end. Do you have any questions about any of the warrants or deposits? I believe the lunch is in here as well. Yep.
I do not. Appreciate the work you guys are putting in on those right now.
Michelle's getting a great handle on it, so she's learning quickly. Sheila was, is, has been very helpful to us, Ms. LeBlanc. So it's been great and we're really starting to get a handle on it. And Megan has really helped out a lot too, so.
It is a good thing Sheila didn't go very far away.
That's for sure. She's offered to help Michelle on the weekends. So I think one Saturday she's already come to help. One Saturday and one after school, she came to give her hand, making sure that we're on the right track. And she's doing a lot of oversight for us at this point. So hopefully by, you know, hoping by January, by the end of January, February, we'll be, you know, on our own. So fingers crossed. But it looks like we're looking, we're looking pretty good and, you know, we've got charts set up in the office and we're starting to work on the next budget season as well. So that's what we're looking at as well. That's where we are on that.
All right. Superintendents' report? Let's keep you going.
I know, I was gonna, I was trying to download it, but I don't, I think it's too big. So I'm gonna have to just do the old-fashioned paper way. Okay, Anna and I participated in a webinar earlier in the month because we are required to do a tiered focus monitoring, which is, if you can take a look at the information I provided you, we are being chosen to participate, well, not actually participate, we were chosen because it's our turn to participate in the civil rights audit. And in that civil rights audit, we'll be talking about equal opportunity for students, looking at physical restraint guidelines, requirements from the Board of Education's timeline regulations, and various other requirements for students with special needs. And this doesn't only pertain to students with special needs, but a lot of the services we provide will be as a result of that. They just want to make sure we're staying on track and make sure everybody's students are, and needs are being met. We were given, I said, in the beginning of the month, we had a meeting and we just were assigned a liaison, I think, the end of last week. So all of this information is due in February and we'll be talking to, I can't think of her name, Kathleen something. So they're gonna be asked to look at teachers' licensure and professional development, parent, student, community engagement. They'll be asking us about facilities and classroom observations, budget oversight, time and learning, and equal access for students. So those are specifically what they're gonna ask us for records on. And this is a great resource because really keeps us making sure that we're current with the Department of Education regulations. It's not a got-you type thing. It's really what do you have for information and how can we help you make sure that you're filling in where the needs aren't being met. So they happen every few years and it's really a good thing. It's a lot of work, but it really keeps us current and makes sure that we're following the losing regulations to make sure that students are being successful. So the next thing is, as a board member of SWECC, I was asked to participate. SWECC is the Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative, which was the information that I sent forth to you being part of that collaborative. I am required, or I've been asked, to participate in the strategic planning. They haven't worked on their strategic plan since 2011. So they have a new director and they're interested in really taking a look at their, the goals for the future of the district and their, in their collaboration with the other districts. So I participate in the strategic planning committee with them. So we also attended a regular board meeting on December 17th. And that's a typical meeting where they talk about budget, policy, and program updates. So we'll be talking a little bit about voting on that later on. We had a regionalization meeting held on December 1st. And the decision was made, sorry, I can't talk anymore with this. The decision was made by the Regionalization Committee to move forward with MARS to conduct the regionalization study using the grant procured. The RFP had two companies apply, they were MARS and TFM. TFM was chosen. And our next meeting will be held tomorrow, the 22nd, which is Wednesday. It's a virtual meeting, so we will be having that as well. There was a wellness committee meeting on November 30th and we had topics that were discussed. We walk across America, the dentist every six months for September, March for students. And that is led by Maureen Floyd of the Health Department here in school, the Nursing Department. And Tim and Sarah participated in as well, talking about a bike safety in March and a bike to school in May. And then they talked about pedestrian safety. Was that something that happened on December 3rd, Sarah, the December 3rd? Or is that where we were, the pedestrian...
No, that happened in the spring of last year. We're planning the bike safety you're talking about, yeah. And then we'll do that again, I think it was March last year, and we'll do it again this year.
And they'll be having a health fair and a blood pressure clinic for the week of, during the week of January, February for families. We have a couple of staff updates. We have a new Spanish instructor, her name is Ada Feliciano. She comes to us from Grafton, so she seems to be working out pretty well. We have a new integrated preschool teacher, Leigh Anne Katie. We have a new physical education instructor, Garrett Kinnon. And we have a new media specialist, Leah Riley. So these are some of the new staff members we've had. The other, we had one retirement, two retirements of that list. And then, yeah, two retirements from the list and two folks took positions in other, in other districts. One is closer to home. So it's, it wasn't too, too bad. We found some great people to fill in their, their places. So COVID numbers for December, North Brookfield High School, staff and students, there were seven positive cases and 15 close contacts. And then 10 of them of the high school did test and stay. So as you can see, the test and stays working pretty well. On the elementary school, we had 13 positive cases and 29 close contacts. And of that, we had 16 test and stays and 13 quarantined. So we're encouraging parents, if they haven't had the opportunity to participate in the test and stay program, that's a great way for you to have your children tested and have them stay in school without having to be quarantined. So the nurses continue to ask parents to do that. But that would be a lot, we really don't want to have students regress in education. So we really like them to participate if possible. We had some updates from the Commission of Education. He's gonna be making a mask mandate in early January. He was supposed to make a mask mandate, I'm sorry, a mask announcement in early January. He was supposed to do it before Christmas vacation. But as a result of the new Omnicron virus, he's gonna wait till after Christmas to make a statement. So we don't know where that is going. He also mentioned snow days need to be taken as snow days. You cannot have backpack days or hybrid days. You know, decisions regarding remote snow days will be made if districts and Massachusetts as a whole has more than five snow days. So then we can take a look at it and do something like that. But right now, he wants kids to be kids and use the snow days. So that will be moving forward here. We had that in plan anyway, but just to let you know, that was what he mentioned. He did talk about if districts need to close because of COVID, there are specific protocols in place that need DESI approval. Districts cannot close without permission from DESI. And if a closure is permitted, there'll only be eight days maximum given to the district for COVID. We are meeting as an admin team later this week to talk about what that will look like on our end, just to make sure that if indeed that has to happen, we will be ready. And we will also be meeting with the union, which I hadn't told them yet, but we'll be talking to them as well to make sure that everybody's on the same page. So, but we'll have a meeting, I think, on Wednesday with the admin staff. And then we will bring it to the union and talk about it next, next month. Okay, on December 7th, I sent out a letter to families and I just gave everybody a copy. You can click on it and take a look at it. I will try to do that once a month and put some information up, information out to the families. I also have something, I have done a focus group with some of the teachers and staff regarding some of the things I'd like to touch on and what I'd like to find a little about North Brookfield. I've had a great response from the students, were very open and honest. So I will, I'm not gonna say what they talked about right now until I compile all the information, but I have started that process. And as far as reaching out to the parents with homeschool parents, I'm also working on a survey for them at this time. And it should be, that should go out probably by the end of the week as well. So that's what I have on my end.
Are you gonna include the school choice families in that survey too?
That survey is for the school choice. And then I'll do a focus group with them as well, yes. I'll be doing a focus group visit first. I'd like to kind of hone in on what, you know, they're coming up with for answers. And then we will, based on what the information I've got from my focus groups here, I'm using to, to talk to the homeless, the homeschool families. Yep. That's what I have today.
Has DESI given you a good idea of how that interaction with them would happen? I mean, I'm looking at the, if they need to approve it, you know, if they're...
You just have, they, there are parameters, there are guidelines that are, that are set in place for us if that indeed happens. You have to have a good reason, for example, how many students are out? Do you have the staff to cover? Those types of things. So there are certain parameters that I can certainly forward to you that you can take a look at.
I wanted to make sure they've given you, you know, someone you can reach out to and that they're participating in that. You're not just getting into a queue and having to...
There is a specific person allocated, I should have written it down, I don't know. But there is a specific person who will be our liaison for that. There are, there have, there's only been one school at this point who's actually had to do that this year. And they were only, they were given the option to close for eight days. So I don't think that, you know, that if they're gonna trust us as a district, if we need to close, they're probably gonna let us do it. But I don't think they want it to be, you know, all year. They're not really looking to have a new hybrid plan for sure. I mean, yeah, that's all I have.
Does anyone have any other questions? All right. Next report is Mr. McCormick.
Thank you, Tim. So a few brief announcements. As Ms. Rickson already mentioned, we've hired a new phys ed teacher, Mr. Garrett Kinnon. Ms. Ada Feliciano for Spanish. We also had Leah Riley added to our staff. And we transitioned Mr. Rigney over to the math position for our middle school. So in all, we've hired five new, we've had five new hires this school year, starting from the first week of school to now. So we are finally full staff, so I'm very pleased about that. It's been a process at times, but, and I thank our students and our families and our other staff members for their patience. We're finally up to full staff. Winter athletics are underway. As you know, we started tryouts the Monday after Thanksgiving. But we had our first home games this past week, both boys and girls basketball, and our cheerleading teams all competed. Boys won, girls lost a close one. We also added a pep band this year. So if you are looking for something to do on a weeknight, come down to a game. We had a full gym last week. It was, it was great to see all of our families, our students. It's been almost two years since we've had basketball in North Brookfield. So this was, was a really good night for our school and for our student athletes, so I'm very pleased. One of the things that's happening right now for a lot of our seniors is college acceptances. If you walk into the high school this time of year, you look straight ahead towards the gym, there's some windows that overlook the gymnasium. That's where we put all of our college pennants with students' names up on that window. So our seniors can see where they're getting accepted to. This past week, we had QCC and Western New England come in for early acceptance days for some of our students. And they, they give you an offer right there on the spot with, you know, your scholarship information right there. So it's a great, great way to get students really psyched about the college admission process. We also will be doing this for students who look to go to the military as they, they come up as well. So we want to recognize all of our seniors for all the great things they're doing throughout the school year. And lastly, Joe mentioned this already a little bit earlier, but I had the pleasure of attending Christmas in North Brookfield on Saturday. Again, it was an event that was held outside last year. It was back in the elementary school this year. I was very proud of our STUCO, our Student Council, for all their, their efforts. We had over 30 students who were helping our elementary students and younger kind of get into the holiday spirit. So those students, under the guidance of Ms. Caitlin Malone, we really was, it is a big part of our school culture. So I was very pleased to see that many students involved, a lot of very happy families and students who attended the event. So that's all I have.
All right, I'm just going by the order here, so I don't have to scroll all the way back up. So the next one I have here is the elementary school report.
Thank you. So I just wanted to highlight two things from the report that was shared with you. The first is, in October, I mentioned that we were implementing SWISS, which is Schoolwide Information System. It's a way to enter office referrals, a good way to track behavior. And now that we've been doing that for a couple of months, we are able to look at that data and see what some of the areas are that we want to focus on. So our social-emotional learning curriculum will target those areas that will be able to see exactly where students need additional support. So really looking forward to digging into that data with the staff. We started that work today and we'll be working on that throughout January. So that was the first bit. And then the second thing I wanted to highlight was, under curriculum instruction and assessment, we are working on setting measurable student outcome goals for students, especially students who are struggling and may need tier-two and tier-three interventions. So staff are working on formulating what those goals could look like, making sure that they're measurable and attainable and timely for, for real feedback on supporting students. Again, part of our MTSS approach, so those are my two big ones. And Spirit Week, because that's up there too. Thank you.
All right. Now the Director of Student Services report. Anna?
So as Ms. Rickson mentioned, we're also going to be working on the tiered focus monitoring. So I'll be doing work over the next couple of weeks on a self-assessment, taking a look at how we're doing. In addition to a lot of the things that Ms. Rickson mentioned, one of the other things is taking a look at discipline, specifically around special education students that have been suspended for 10 or more days and taking a look at how we've been doing with that. So that's just another piece to the tiered focus monitoring that is happening. Some other things going on is, I've been working on reviewing and revising a lot of existing documents such as the 504 procedures, the Special Education Procedures Manual, updating it to current day, making sure that everything is as it should be, modifying, updating any documents that, and forms that should be filled out for those processes. So that's a work in progress that, that's been happening on my end. Some other things going on is, I've been working with our ELL teacher, our English Language Learner teacher, to prepare for access testing, which is happening in January. And that's for English language learners in our district. Every year in January, they have to take what's called access testing to measure where they are in the English language proficiency level. And the other thing I just want to bring up is, our next monthly CPAC meeting is happening tomorrow night at 6:00 PM via Zoom. And if anyone would like further information about how to access that Zoom, it is on the North Brookfield Public Schools website.
How's the, are you getting more people at those?
Last month, we got a couple more people and the feedback was that it was more convenient. So hopefully, there'll be some more people tomorrow night. Although I'm not sure with the holidays coming up, what the turnout will be. But, but we would certainly love to see more parents and hear from parents about, you know, what they feel is working well, what, what we can do to support parents of special needs, you know, any questions they have. So, and if a parent isn't sure if CPAC is for them, they're still more than welcome to come and check it out. So all parents are welcome.
All right, hopefully the tens of people that might be watching this right now will spread the word on...
Yes, absolutely.
No, it's important. It's a really, it's a really good group that can change a lot of things at the school. So anyone, you know, I reiterate, anyone that's even moderately interested in it, it's worth checking out and getting involved in the CPAC meetings.
Absolutely.
Tomorrow night, 6:00 PM on Zoom. Don't have to worry about traffic. Facilities Department?
I'll just give you a couple of updates from Mr. Shaw. So far, he was glad to see that we're getting back to normal again, as Mr. McCormick said, about Christmas in North Brookfield and La Pityo and Craft Fair. So he really enjoyed feeling some normalcy here. There was some exhaust fan maintenance. They found four units with bad bearings and worn shafts. So they just quoted a report that came, a quote that came back with 3480. So this is for the high school and we're gonna be working to get some approval on that. And then there's some miscellaneous plumbing repairs that will be taking place during the break. They've also started the budget process and the oil bids are not back in. He's very concerned, I can tell you about specifically, he's very concerned about what the cost of oil and, and other resources we're gonna need. I believe, it's not on his, on his particular quote, but we had talked about it earlier at one of our meetings. And he's thinking at least a 15% to 20% increase in some of the budgeting for him. So I just wanted to, he's, he's very, very concerned. He's watching it very closely every day. He comes in and nothing yet, nothing yet. But he's gonna continue to look for the best prices to make sure that we get the best services. But he's very worried about that. As we all are as homeowners and such too. It's not gonna be an easy year for sure. Okay, that's all he has. And he just wants to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
I was at the Craft Fair and at the special town meeting and it seemed like every time I walked around the corner, Mr. Shaw was there. I don't know how he does it, but he was just always there.
Yeah, yeah.
He doesn't stop moving, so.
You know, when they do like the, like different groups get together, schools get together for like to get better like health insurance costs and stuff like that, do they do that for like oil? Like if other schools and other people...
They do, they do. That's, he's working on, he works with French River on that. So yeah, they, 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 a collaborative, they absolutely do. That's how he determines that. Yeah, they do. Yeah. So yeah, he's working with that right now and he's being diligent. It's not, it's not just oil, it's for electricity, although, you know, there's not much we can do with electricity. But he's also looking to see what, you know, what other, is that, oil, what else was he worried about?
The oil was the major concern, yeah, yeah.
He was worried about that, yeah.
The last one, I believe, is the...
Technology.
Technology update.
Yep. A couple of things on that. She's doing the civil rights data collection process and it has to be submitted by the end of February. So Cindy's working on that. So she submitted all of our reports that have to be in and the next report window is in March. She's also talking about the school attending report, which is due by February 25th. So she's really working on a lot of reports about students in our district, which is something that I know people want to know what enrollment numbers are. But we're working on that for the next meeting, talking about what our enrollment is, what our out-of-district placements are, and making sure that the charter of vocational private schools. So those are something that Cindy's working on to make sure that we're as current as we can be on that. we can be on that. And there's some new initiatives that's coming out about school, virtual students, so that will be, we'll have more information on that as it's forthcoming. I don't have all the information yet, but we just got a little blurt today on that. So putting that all together, Cindy will have that to us at the next meeting in, in January.
So like she's got a lot of work to do.
Yeah, and budget season's coming up, so we're starting to work on that as well. So I should have put that in my report, but yes, we're working on that. And that's, that's all we have for reports.
All right. Any old business? Anything on here, anything to bring up?
Nope.
New business? This is, this is fun new business, approval of donations. The first one's Donors Choose Program. What's that all about?
Well, you know, I'm gonna toss that right over to Sarah.
Perfect.
Sure, why not?
Sure.
We like to fully acknowledge these, these donations and where they're coming from.
I just wanted, if you could explain the, the actual program, and then we'd have to do the money amount, but sure.
So the BCBA, one for us, I wanna kind of look over to Anna for a minute, but our BCBA and Behavior Intervention Specialists have been working to improve their therapeutic space for students who need to calm down or who need a reset. They've been working on the movement room, which is, there's, there's three rooms, they have their office, and then they have a, a back room, which was a movement room that has mats and things that students can wiggle on or wiggle in. There's also a third room, which is sort of just a storage room right now, they want to turn that into a sensory room for students who need a calming space. So some of the things that they asked for or items that would appeal to those sensory needs.
Do you know what Donors Choose program is? Do you know what the Donors Choose program is?
I've heard of it, I, I didn't, I don't know the full backstory on it.
Oh, okay. So, that's what I was...
I would like to hear just a little bit about it, so we can give them credit, too.
Yeah, of course. So Donors Choose is a website that teachers can request to run projects, and the projects are specifically for materials that they've indicated that they need. It differs from GoFundMe where instead of donating money and then the staff uses the money to go and buy the materials, the money is donated to Donors Choose, and Donors Choose assists in the ordering of the materials, so you know exactly what, as a, as a donor, you know exactly what you're donating to.
Like a wishlist, an online wishlist?
It is, yeah, and it's, and, and we have a very generous community, so we're very grateful for everyone who, who assisted in donating towards those materials. You can get a very specific itemized list on, from those, from that program. And the ELL teacher had requested some materials from Teachers Pay Teachers, which is, teachers create materials and then offer them for sale to other, other teachers, so it's really important for Ms. Josty as she is creating an ELL program from scratch, so any resources that she can find are really beneficial.
Right, because there is no current ELL curriculum here in the district because it is new position, so. And she actually was able to get Donors Choose donation on Giving, is it Giving Tuesday? So they, they matched what someone had donated, which was nice.
So Donors Choose is an organization to help us, so they were, gave to two teachers, Karen Alitz, or pre-K BCBA, for $1,196, and you can see some of the items that she purchased for, it's part of your documentation with, with that money. And then the other was paid, she, again, a curriculum for $200, so those are the two donations. Do you want me to do all the donations at one time and just do one? Motion, or do you want to do each group?
We can, we can do all of them at one time.
Okay. And then if you take, take a look at the next group, the PTO kindly approved two donations for the, one for the sixth grade and one for the third grade. So Ms. Hurley's class received a document camera and a value of $69, so we'd like to thank the PTO for that. And then Andrea Maher was a third grade, got a $250 expenditure to buy Scholastic magazines. So those are the donations for the month of November and December.
Excellent.
And I'll add that the Scholastic magazines are for both third grade classrooms, they share the materials, so that is for our entire third grade.
Now, is there like a list of like things that people are looking for that, I know, like you said, with Donors Choose, you can look it up by school, but is that like the place to go if people in the community want to donate something?
It would be, it would be.
Yeah, the only other way that teachers would indicate things that they need would be through an Amazon wishlist. It's, it's less used, only because Donors Choose has a, a very specific way of getting those materials to the school, whereas Amazon, it would be up to the teacher to order them, so.
So all your teachers that would like something right now, those, the Donors Choose?
Yes. And we tend to share those on our Facebook page, so if folks are on social media, that's one place to go to find that. We could also post them on the website, I suppose.
Yeah, for sure, I, I was just, I was just thinking about that, we were working on the website today, so I think...
Put a place on the website for projects that you can donate towards, if there's any projects running. It's a great idea.
We will definitely get right on that, I like that idea.
And if, and anyone else, if they're interested, they can get involved in the PTO, too, because they donate based on what the teachers are asking for, which is, and the other night we got to see them in action with a lot of people in the school, so that was, that's a big event for them. All right, so we need a vote to accept the donations from the Donors Choose program and from the PTO as listed here. I get a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion to accept all of the donations.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor? All of us are in favor. All right, the last one that we need to vote on?
And as I mentioned earlier today, as a member of the SWEC, Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative, we are part of their Board of Directors, which is very similar to a school committee, so I will need the school committee's approval to remain on that board to ensure that we are represented in North Brookfield through the collaborative.
I'll make a motion to appoint you as the SWCec board member.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor? I'm sorry, there was no discussion on that, right?
No discussion. Volunteer for whatever you want.
Yeah.
All right, do we have anything we need to discuss in executive session? I think Ron and Christie would be offended if we had an executive session without them. So, does anyone have anything else they would like to add?
Nope.
In that case, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn. I'll second it.
All in favor? All right, have a Merry Christmas, everyone, happy holidays, Happy New Year, see you in January.
Thank you.